Good evening and welcome to the city of Battle Creek, Michigan, in our Battle Creek City Commission meeting for May 6, 2025. It is 7:01 PM. We're going to take a shorter way of conducting our meeting tonight. We have new computers, and I just want to make sure everyone understands that there could be some confusion. Already, we're chasing one problem, so we'll get that resolved. But we're going to stand for a moment of silence, and then we'll have our Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Patrick O'Donnell. So if you can stand, please, for a moment of silence. Commissioner Patrick O'Donnell, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on our agenda is roll call. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
Commissioner Katarsky Smith?
Here.
Commissioner LaCoss?
Here.
Commissioner Lance?
Here.
Commissioner Morris?
Here.
Mayor Banky?
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Present.
Commissioner Simmons?
Here.
And Vice Mayor Sophia?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Next item on our agenda is the Proclamations and Awards. We have several for today. We're first going to start out by inviting Jeannie Goodrich, CEO, and Regina Gilmore from the Community Relations and Outreach Lead, and Haley Thrill from the Community Engagement Coordinator from Summit Point to join us up front. And we want to hear a little bit more about Mental Health Awareness Month. We do have a proclamation that we'll read for the record. And then, secondly, we'll have a proclamation for the Police Officer Memorial Week and Police Officer Memorial Day. I'll ask the chief to come over and say a few words. And then, finally, we're going to close out by celebrating Municipal Clerks Week, and I'll ask the clerk and her entire voting staff to come up and celebrate. Just kidding. We'll just probably have the clerk and the assistant clerk. So I'll join everyone in front, first of all, with the Mental Health Awareness Month. Well, welcome. We really appreciate you being here tonight. I have a proclamation, but I want to hear more about what you guys are doing at Summit Point to help our community and to help the city of Battle Creek. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Dorothy Malcolm, so I'm the Chief Operating Officer at Summit Point. I am not Jeannie. Jeannie has some other things that she had commitments tonight, so I'm glad to be here with all of you. So Summit Point is working diligently on our services through our urgent care at First Step, and that's at 175 College Street. And so that is the access point for all of our services. And so that's really the place to start if anyone needs services, mental health or substance abuse. Thank you. Regina?
Good afternoon or evening. Yeah, Summit Point is everywhere. I am actually everywhere. I'm part of the Community Outreach and Relations. So I'm like lots of events, lots of places. And speaking about Summit Point in all different aspects, different places within the county. So again, like Dorothy said, when you need services, 175 College Street is the place to actually start those services. And that could be for any services. Or if our crisis line, you can reach out to our crisis line, and you can always reach a person that would not be an answer machine. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think that is key to the people of Battle Creek to know where you start at. And I don't think we share that enough, so I really appreciate you emphasizing that today. But on behalf of the citizens of the city of Battle Creek, we'd like to present this proclamation. And we want to thank you for everything you do to help just create a better sense of living and the way that the city of Battle Creek can flourish, especially with those with mental health. So thank you. Chief? I want to, on behalf of the City Commission, thank our chief and his officers for everything they do. And that's why we're celebrating Police Memorial Week. And tell us a little bit about anything that will take place.
Well, first of all, thank you. Police Memorial Week is a time in which we set aside to honor those that have fallen and given the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty. Quite ironically, 20 years ago, come this Friday, Detective Laverne Braun was killed in the line of duty here in the city of Battle Creek. And I was a young detective in my old life, a few miles east of here, or west of here, on that tragic day, and ended up responding here to Battle Creek that day. So it's a very special day. That's a day that we are going to honor and remember Laverne. And it's a day not only for, it's a day for the community as well. And next week, we'll start Police Memorial Week, and there'll be some activities that you'll be able to slide by, and we'll just celebrate with the community. So thank you.
Chief, thank you very much. On behalf of the people of the city of Battle Creek, we would like to present this proclamation and have it officially read into the record. Vicki? And any other members of the city clerk staff? Could you please join us up front? And Vicki has us down to a rugged routines. I'm just going to give the microphone to Vicki.
Okay. So I'm the city clerk. These are the ladies who basically help me to do everything that we do for our community and for our voters. Today, we do have an election, so we're hoping people will come and vote. But yep, these are the ladies I get to work with every single day.
Well, Vicki and staff, we want to say thank you again for everything that you go above and beyond to help the people. And I know that I've heard more people thank the city for things that Vicki and her staff will do. Sometimes, they'll even chase someone out to their car to say, "One more minute. I think we've got something that you need." And you don't see that happen that often. So we say thank you. We appreciate you. And for this special week, let's make it special for you. Next item on our agenda is chair noting any added or deleted resolutions?
There were none.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is petitions, communications, and reports?
There are none.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is public comment regarding any specific agenda item. And please allow me to read this information. If you'd like to make public comment regarding any remaining agenda item, please raise your hand, and I will acknowledge you to come forward to the podium. You will have four minutes to make your comments. Please state your name and address before and beginning your comment, and indicate which agenda item you are speaking to. If you're looking to make comment on the public hearing that time, we'll be coming up on the next agenda item. Are there any public comments at this time? Yes, Autumn Smith.
Am I allowed to comment on the proclamation since they were on the agenda?
I'm sorry, what?
Am I allowed to comment on the proclamation because they were on the agenda?
No, it's any comment, any item that's below.
So that's been changed. Okay, thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Yes? No, that has to be at the end of the meeting. Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll move to the public hearing. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
The city currently has 3,781 lead service lines or galvanized service lines that were previously connected to lead, and 871 water service lines of unknown material that must be verified. In order to comply with Michigan's Lead and Copper Rule, LCR, the confirmed lead service lines or galvanized service lines previously connected to lead must be replaced. This is a public hearing to obtain community input on the drinking water state revolving loan fund fiscal year 2026 project plan for lead service line replacement.
All right, I'll declare the public hearing open. Are there any public comments at this period of time? Or I believe we go to the presentation. Okay, go ahead. You may start it, Madam Clerk.
Madam Vice Mayor, esteemed members of the Battle Creek City Commission, my name is Aaron Davenport, and I am with Jones and Henry Engineers. And I am here to present to you your fiscal year 2026 DWSRF project plan. This one deals specifically with lead service lines, and this is the public hearing. The city is applying for a drinking water state revolving fund, that's DWSRF, which is a low-interest loan program that allows cities, municipalities throughout the state to apply for financing that is at significantly lower fixed rates than open market financing, other open market financing options. It's for critical drinking water infrastructure. DWSRF is a federal financing program administered by the state of Michigan through the Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy, and it provides principal forgiveness and some grants to overburdened communities, which Battle Creek has been considered in the past and is expected to be considered going forward. There is no obligation for any of these loans until the time of loan closing. Now, I appreciate this commission's desire for brevity in these public hearings, but there are some items that I have to cover as they are requirements for the SRF programs, financing programs. Some of them are even a little bit redundant. I hope that you will bear with me as I try and get through this as quickly as possible. So for DWSRF, in order to be considered for a DWSRF loan, the city has to submit a project plan by June 1 that describes the project they intend to finance and why it is necessary. You have to allow for the public to review that project plan, and you have to hold a public hearing to present the plan and address comments. That's why we're here tonight. Project plans are then prioritized and scored based on need, because there is a fixed amount of funding available for lending each year. The project plan allows the city to state its case as to why its project is more critical than others that are submitted. So for the public hearing, we are here tonight to present the project plan, to review any of the comments that have been previously submitted prior to this meeting, and to allow for additional public comments. The project plan has been available for, to the public, for review both by download online and in physical copy at the Department of Public Works for the last 15 days. And public comments were able to be made through the scanning of the QR code on their phone, so trying to make it as accessible and open to everybody as possible. So the projects, these projects are specifically lead service line replacements. In the state of Michigan, there's a law called the Lead and Copper Rule. It is part of the Safe Drinking Water Act, and it requires that all lead service lines and galvanized service lines that were previously connected to lead, they have to be removed and replaced. All of them within the city and its system have to be gone. Actually, all of them within the entire state have to be gone by 2041. The city has been making headway year over year on these replacements, but if the opportunity presented itself for good financing rates, it's certainly in the city's financial interest to get these done as quickly as possible. More than just financial interest, just in the interest of the public and its health and safety in general. Currently, the city has identified 3,781 lead service lines or galvanized service lines that were previously connected to lead for replacement. There are also an additional 871 service lines that are unknown material-wise that need to be investigated and verified for either replacement or to confirm that they are not in need of replacement. So for lead and galvanized services that were formerly connected to lead, the state requires a full replacement. That's all the way from the water main to the first valve inside the home. For services of unknown materials, both sides of the curb stop, which is the valve that is typically located in the driveway or at the back edge of a sidewalk, it's the demarcation between the public side and the private side. We have to expose both sides of that curb stop and check the materials on either side to see whether they are in need of replacement. So as part of these project plans, you're required to investigate all the alternatives that you looked at. In the case of lead service line specific projects, that list is already curtailed to only a couple of options, because there really is no alternative method for dealing with lead service lines other than full replacement. One of the requirements is that we look at regionalization. Is there an opportunity for the city to join forces with another water system, and would that correct the problem? Obviously, in the case of lead service lines, connecting to another system doesn't change the fact that there are still lead service lines out there. And so it would not bring the city into compliance with the Michigan Lead and Copper Rule. So that does not need to be explored further. Replacement really is the only option here. Replacing the service lines that are either lead confirmed or galvanized that were previously connected to lead is the only thing that will bring the city into compliance with the Lead and Copper Rule. So of course, as part of this, we look at the monetary evaluation. Replacement of lead service lines is the least costly alternative. It's the only thing that will bring it into compliance with Lead and Copper Rule. Here are the anticipated projects cost. As you can see, it's not an insignificant amount of money. It is just shy of $28 million. But again, these are costs that are expected to continue rising, as all things tend to, and over the next 16 years until we get to 2041, you know, if we can tackle these projects now, it will be a lower cost overall. So looking at this, we look at the net present worth for these projects. Again, there really is no other option. There is no option to do nothing here, and there is no other feasible way of coming into compliance with Lead and Copper Rule other than replacement. But this is the net present worth for the projects. As part of these project plans, we have to look at all of the potential impacts of what this project will mean. In this case, one of the physical things we have to look at is wetlands, flood plains, land and water resources, historic and tribal resources. And we do that by contacting state historic preservation offices, the tribal offices. We talk to the Department of Natural Resources. We also talked to Fish and Wildlife to assess what are the potential impacts of this project. In this case, there are almost no adverse impacts expected for this work. So we don't expect there to be any endangered species or endangered plants, you know, impacted by this project. Again, these are all previously developed areas. There are areas that have buildings and houses that are already, you know, developed and have service lines. The Michigan National Features Inventory conducted a rare species review, as well as U.S. Fish and Wildlife, and they concur that there is unlikely to be any impact. From a debt service and repayment standpoint, the annual debt service for the project is expected to be around $1.7 million per year. That's based on a 2.2% interest rate over a 20-year term. Again, there is principal forgiveness oftentimes available for this, and potentially grant dollars as well. No promises, obviously, but at times that is available, which would lower the overall cost. Debt service, in this case, will be paid through water rates based on equivalent meters. There are currently 34,111 equivalent meters, so equivalent to a residential, like a household meter. And those would carry a cost of around $50.81 per year in order to service this debt. So we also have to look environmental and public health impacts. In the case of construction, there are always some minor impacts. You know, there's construction that will happen in a bunch of city residential neighborhoods. It will impact private property as well, because again, we have to replace full lead service lines all the way into the building. There will be some minor ground disturbance, some tree removal, but we don't expect any significant lasting impact by this work. Social impacts, there is not expected to be a significant increase in water rates by this project. Again, you know, with potential for grants and/or principal forgiveness, we expect it to be less than $5 per month to service this debt. We would expect that there is the potential for increased job opportunities, because it will be a significant amount of construction throughout the city. Traffic patterns may be disturbed during construction, but again, proper engineering design and planning can mitigate most of that. From an indirect impact standpoint, we don't expect there to be much, right? Most of the existing, most of this area is existing and developed already, so we don't expect there to be significant impacts to any areas like agricultural areas or recreational areas. Air quality might be impacted in the short term due to construction, but it won't be lasting. Water quality will only be improved throughout the city by the removal and replacement of lead service lines. From a mitigation standpoint, impacts to endangered species are not expected, and of course, we'll comply with all of the Michigan State Historic Preservation Office requirements. Tribal Historic Preservation Offices have been notified of the project and given the opportunity to comment. To date, we have received no negative comments from any of those groups. And construction impacts will be mitigated through, you know, design and construction, and also communication. At that, at this point, we'll get to public comments. For public comments received prior to the public hearing, again, this public, this project plan has been advertised for the last 15 days, and public comments could be made by scanning a QR code, which took you to a questionnaire to fill out. And then we can talk about additional public comments from those in attendance. I thank you for your time in listening to this, and if there's any way that I can assist further, please do not hesitate to call me. Yeah, I appreciate your patience, and thank you for letting me check all the appropriate state-required boxes. Thank you for that. As of the start of this public hearing, we have received no public comments on the project plan. I can confirm that the project plan was downloaded at least one time. I don't know if anybody actually viewed the physical copy at DPW. Are you aware? But it's been available, and we met all the requirements for public posting, so.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Do we have any other public comments at this time on this presentation? Yes, Reese Atkins.
Reese Atkins, 84 South 23rd Street. As I was listening and looking at what you're talking about, I just have one question slash comment. Being that I see that they're talking price increase, is that with rental properties, because the properties don't actually belong to the renter, it belongs to somebody else, are we going to be responsible for the pain of this replacement of these pipes, or is that going to be on our landlord who actually owns the building? Because like in our case, we pay the water bill, but we don't actually own the building, nor do we own any of the pipes going into the building. If something happens to where a water pipe breaks or something like that, we notify the landlord, who then in return calls the appropriate people to come out and fix it. So who is going to be responsible to pay for these increase on rental properties?
Reese, I will have our consultant get back to you on that answer. Are there any other public comments at this time? Yes, John Keneffick.
I'll try to answer Mr. Reese's question. Landlords will have operating expenses in regards to these matters, and they will pass them on to their operation, plus wasting or taking up part of their time to do this. I was listening to the presentation very carefully. First I've ever heard about it is just now. And it caught my attention of, one, where the money is coming from, and, two, loan forgiveness, so you don't have to pay back the money that you were loaned. Is that federal dollars, state dollars? So somebody's going to pay that bill, even if you don't pay it. And in some other location, some other municipality where this goes on, they may have something very similar. So whoever's paying the bills, we're all taxpayers, so somewhere along the line, everyone's paying the bills, even though it doesn't look like you're paying it here or there, it's still coming after, coming out of somebody else's or every citizen's taxpayer pockets. So even though it's forgiveness, and it sounds real good, it also sounds where the money's coming from. And if this is federal, by the way, they're already $36 trillion in debt. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments, and we'll get back to the answer. Any other public comments at this time? Are there any other public comments? Seeing none? Any commission comments? Commissioner Simmons?
And I'm assuming this is going to come back before us at some point or another for a decision as far as the plan moving forward, or this public comment period is just satisfying the requirement?
Yeah, I believe so, Commissioner. So Steve might be able to help with this, too. The drinking, the revolving loan fund proceeds that we received were for a variety of projects, our well casing project, some improvements over at Verona, and then a couple of large neighborhood-based lead service line replacement projects. And I believe that those contracts have already been awarded. So this is just, this is a public comment piece simply related to the revolving loan fund. But I don't, I don't think there's anything left to come back before the commission.
This is a new application for all the rest of the lead services in the city.
Well, there you go. Okay.
So there'll be a resolution next commission meeting for that.
So like Mr. Keneffick, this is the first I've heard of this, so I'm looking forward to discussing this further, as far as if we're stuck with this option of just saddling everybody in town with this, or can we do something like, oh, instead of charging everybody who doesn't have lead service for a few that do, putting that, you know, like an assessment on that particular property to resolve that. I don't know if that's even an option. I'd like to discuss that further, or I'd like to get some more information on that, as well as, don't, just to comment, don't you love the higher-level requirements from whether it be federal or state, burdening our city with $27 million of, maybe they'll forgive it, maybe they won't. I, it's, yeah, great.
Okay, we'll prepare for that when the resolution comes back.
I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other commission comment? Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So when is this going to take place? When are you going to start?
This would be 2027? Yeah, if, this is a 2027 project plan if it's awarded.
Okay.
So we'll be moving forward at that point in time.
Okay, all the way through 2040?
Yeah, all the lead services have to be replaced by 2041, regardless of if we pursue this loan or not. So we're going to be spending that money to replace all the lead services regardless. regardless. Um, it's just whether we go forward with the loan or not.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commission comments? All right, I'll declare the public hearing closed. We'll move on to introduction of ordinances. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
I'd like to move to introduce ordinance number 02-2025.
Oh, Commissioner, we're going to have, um, the clerk read, and then we'll, we'll do that. Thanks.
Section 294.18 of the Battle Creek Code of Ordinance was adopted on November 28, 1978, and has not been updated since then. Significant changes in technology, processes, city administration, and general best practices have made the 1978 ordinance less relevant to today's needs and contrary to many best practices. This proposed ordinance, number 02-2025, amends section 294.018 of the Battle Creek Code of Ordinance's travel expenses.
I'd like to move to introduce, uh, ordinance number 02-2025.
Support.
Been moved and supported to introduce ordinance 02-2025. Are there any commission Seeing none, would you please vote on the introduction of ordinance 02-2025? Ordinance 02-2025 has been introduced in its past. Next item on our agenda is commission comment regarding median business.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
Been moved and supported to approve the consent agenda. Is there any comments, questions, or clarifications needed by the commission on the consent agenda? Seeing none, would you please vote? The consent agenda has been approved. Next item on our agenda is resolution number 118. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
The city will be renovating and expanding Fire Station 6, located at 2401 Capitol Avenue Southwest. To support the project, a land exchange with adjacent parcel owner Zachary Antis will allow the city to square up a city-owned parcel and will provide more room for the expansion. This resolution, if approved, authorizes the interim city manager to execute a sales agreement for the exchange of property in connection with the expansion of Fire Station Number 6.
Move to approve resolution number 118.
Support.
Been moved and supported to approve resolution 118. Are there any comments by the commission on resolution 118? Seeing none, would you please vote on resolution Resolution 118 has been approved. Next item on our agenda is resolution 119. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
The city's airport has received a grant for $736,367 that will fund the design phase for the fully, full reconstruction of Taxiway A, which will bring the airfield into compliance with current FAA safety guidance, enhance operational efficiency, and support future airport growth. This resolution, if approved, authorizes the interim city manager to execute the attached contract for a federal, state, local airport project under the block grant program with the Michigan Department of Transportation, and one in substantially similar form, or one in substantially similar form that meets with the approval of the city attorney. In addition, the interim city manager is authorized to execute any other forms and/or certifications necessary to effectuate the contract, including but not limited to the FAA sponsored certifications attached here that meet with the approval of the city attorney.
Move to approve resolution number 118.
Support.
Been moved and supported to approve resolution 119. Are there any comments or questions or concerns by the commission? Commissioner Simmons, was that a hand going up, or was that? No, okay. Any other comments, concerns? Are we prepared to vote? Please vote on resolution Resolution 119 has been approved. Next item on our agenda is resolution 120.
On October 19, 2024, the number six primary clarifier at the Battle Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant suffered an emergency breakdown due to damage to the scum skimmer arm. To ensure continuous wastewater treatment and plant redundancy, immediate repairs were essential. This resolution, if approved, authorized the payment of invoice number 26660 in the amount of $158,875.14 to Shoal Dice Industrial Manufacturers and Contractors for emergency repair to the number six primary clarifier.
Move to approve resolution number 120.
Support.
So moved and supported to approve resolution 120. Are there any comments, concerns, questions by the commission? Resolution 120 has been approved. Next item on our agenda is resolution 121.
A solicitation was issued March 5, 2025, for work at the city's wastewater treatment plant. The project includes removal of the existing sludge pumps and installation of new sludge pumps, piping and valve improvements, building improvements including brick crack repair and lintel repair, concrete stair landing replacement, HVAC improvements, electrical improvements, floor door removal and replacement, and painting. This resolution, if approved, authorizes acceptance of the lowest responsive responsible bid for the wastewater treatment plant's I and E building and headworks improvements project from Shoal Dice Industrial Manufacturers and Contractors Incorporated in a not to exceed amount of $2,741,554.
Move to approve resolution number 121.
Support.
Been moved and supported to approve resolution 121. Are any comments, concerns, or questions by the commission? Seeing none, would you please vote on resolution 121? Resolution 121 has been approved. Next item on our agenda is resolution 122.
In December of 2020, the city of Battle Creek leased space at Full Blast to Berrien Springs Public Schools, from which the lease aid operates the West Michigan Virtual Academy. The lease was amended in 2022 to extend the term of the lease to a five-year term expiring on June 30, 2025, with an option to renew for an additional two years. The Second Amendment provides for the option of an additional two-year renewal commencing on July 1, 2027, and ending on June 30, 2029, and also provides for the provision of janitorial services by the city with an adjustment to the lease payments to reflect those additional services. This resolution, if approved, authorizes the interim city manager to enter into a Second Amendment of the lease of space within the Full Blast facility to Berrien Springs Public Schools, West Michigan Virtual Academy.
Move to approve resolution number 122.
Support.
Been moved and supported to approve resolution 122. Are there any questions, concerns, or ques, or comments made by the commission? Seeing none, would you please vote on resolution 122? Resolution 122 has been approved. Next item on our general, agenda is the general public comment, limited to three minutes per individual. If you'd like to make general public comment regarding matters over which the city commission has control, please raise your hand and wait for us to acknowledge you to come forward to the podium. You'll have three minutes to make your comments. Please state your name and address prior to beginning your comment.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Dean Warden, 223 Martha Drive, Battle Creek. Um, I'm in Commissioner Simmons' territory. Hello. Um, I'm here, uh, tonight to say thank you and express my appreciation for, uh, to the commission, to Mayor Banky, to Chief Badley, uh, for listening first and foremost, uh, to a couple of concerns I brought forth, uh, in, uh, the past months. Uh, there's two different issues. Uh, the first issue is, uh, my concern about Riverside Park and the safety and the use of the parking lot and after hours. And, um, I spoke about that, and I asked the police department to consider whether or not there could be increased, uh, patrols of the area, uh, whether or not there could be new signage, uh, put in place at the entrance, uh, to the parking lot, uh, so the citizens could have a fair understanding of when and, um, you know, those times not to be in that area. I have seen a marked decrease in the amount of, uh, traffic and at after hours, and I think the, if I remember right, the after hours would be anytime after dusk, dark, you know, general park rules. And there's been really a decrease in there. Um, I have the luxury of sitting from my living room and looking straight out at the parking lot. And in the winter, when all the trees are down and, uh, not down, but, you know, lacking leaves, I can see straight out there, and I'm just not seeing much at all. It will pick up a little bit in the summer, so I think it's worth considering, um, from the police department's point of view, if you would, um, to keep an eye on that. Um, as you know, there was a murder that occurred in that area, and as I walk that area every day, I see the memorial to the young lady who was murdered. So hopefully that's never going to be replaced, uh, or replicated as a problem. Um, second of all, I want to thank you for, uh, the condition of the ball diamonds. After many, uh, comments about that and coming to a few meetings, I see that they have been serviced. Uh, hopefully there's new equipment in place. Um, I went by McCray Park today to take a look at that, and that looked good. Uh, Riverside looks good. Uh, that's a, a positive comment on the city and the city's reputation to maintain those. And I know it's cheap, I know it's quick, and we finally got it done, so it's benefiting families. I'm seeing families up there right now, and we're in the start of baseball season, so the timing's good. So thank you for listening, thank you for acting, and, uh, I appreciate it.
Dean, thank you very much for coming down here tonight too, for making your comments. God bless you. Thanks. Any other public comment? Yes, Autumn Smith, please.
Good evening, Autumn Smith. I'm here today to speak about a deeply concerning manner regarding transparency and integrity in our public institutions, specifically surrounding the Freedom of Information Act requests and the conduct of Officer Joel Case. A recent FOIA request uncovered communications showing Officer Case denied the existence of a specific document. That document, however, has since been proven to exist. This is not simple oversight. This is a failure to uphold the basic duty of honesty that the public is owed, especially by those who wear a badge and are entrusted with enforcing the law and ensuring public trust. Even more troubling is the fact that Officer Case appeared more interested in identifying who was making the request and why, rather than ensuring the request was fulfilled in good faith. This shifts the role of FOIA coordinator from a neutral administrator of public access to gatekeeper applying selective scrutiny. This behavior not only erodes public trust, it raises a red flag about the possibility of a multi-tiered FOIA response system, one for insiders and another for the rest of us. That is not transparency, that is institutional bias. I urge this commission to investigate this because I doubt this is an isolated incident. It appears to be a symptom of a larger pattern. We need accountability. We need FOIA processes to be impartial, consistent, and grounded in the law, not in the identity or concern of the requister. Public records belong to the public. The truth should never depend on who's asking. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Yes, Joe.
Joe Harris, Battle Creek. Um, I have two things. A while ago, the commission voted on and established a citizen, or community oversight board. Uh, and since then, we really haven't heard anything in regard to that board, other than who, who was appointed on the board. Um, I know that police, the police chief and the commission s, supported the, uh, community oversight board, and it would be a shame i, if the board were not to be, were to be established and not be active. Um, I know that, uh, the COB members are supposed to go through mandatory training, and I'm just wondering if any of that's been done. Um, in addition, since this is a board, it's, it's my understanding that I, I believe there needs to be some bylaws that have to be set. Um, and if that's the case, um, has that been done? And if the bylaws haven't been done, the question is, is, is why haven't they been done? I, I don't know that answer. Um, all I know is I can look at Google, and it takes me 30 seconds to look up a bylaw template. That's just me. Um, and again, like I'm saying, it would be a shame to establish that board and have, have it do nothing. Um, I'm sure we all want to see that come to fruition. Um, second thing, uh, just want to keep encouraging the commission. Um, I, I would like to see an option given to the Battle Creek Police Department and the Battle Creek Fire Department in that if both those departments are responsible in their budgets, and they have monies left over at the end of the year, that those monies do not be put into the general fund, but they put into a separate fund so as to save for things in the future, such as equipment purchases, building maintenance, and the like. Um, I think that we would be a good start so that we can prevent another $28.5 million shortfall for updates to buildings and such. And I really think there needs to be a discussion on what needs to be done in order to, um, plan for the future in regard to the departments and the buildings. So, uh, thank you for your time. I appreciate it. Have a good day, guys.
Thank you, Joe, and we'll get back to you on your request. Are there any other public comments at this time? John Keneffick.
John Keneffick, 234 South Avenue. I'm going to intentionally go off subject, and then I'm going to tie it back into the government of Battle Creek. Today is kind of a sad day because it's a vote for the public school system, Battle Creek, the Battle Creek Public School System. I attended a meeting on May 1. There were only two people from the public that actually showed up as individ, as individuals and not part of the system. Of course, I will ask very pointed questions. And in that questions, I explained to them many years ago, there was a $69 million school bond issue that was then refinanced in 2016 at a lower interest rate. The Battle Creek supervisor, school supervisor admitted that they take that benefit, and they channel it back into the system, keeping the money, that's a cost increase, and an income stream back to the government, or back to the Battle Creek Public School System. The other assurance was, and this was said straight on to me, that there will be no millage increases if this issue is voted on and approved today. This is a photocopy of that ballot. Let me quote you, what she said is accurate or not. Zero mil net increase over the prior year's levy, which means we're all going to get cost increases of 90 cents for every thousand dollars next year. So she's telling us the truth that there's no millage increase right now, but not in the near future. Now, what does this have to do with the government of Battle Creek? Many years ago, the government of Battle Creek took out a loan for the Department of Public Works on Kendall Street. Many years later, they refinanced that loan at a lower interest rate and kept the money another cost increase, another income stream to the government of Battle Creek, and didn't bother to tell anybody that they also increased four years of that loan, so the person making the loan or the organization that made that loan would get four more years worth of payments and make up all that money at the taxpayer expense. Similarities between one operation and another? I explained something and sat to somebody afterwards that said these words to me, and the man who spoke with me was Herb Hayden. We sat after the meeting, and he'll, by the way, Herb Hayden. We sat after the meeting, and, by the way, Herb Hayden is the senior executive director of District Operations, Battle Creek Public Schools. We had a nice conversation. But I also explained to him that there was no way anybody could explain to me that it's in the best interest of the public or the people of the Battle Creek school system to ever, ever take out loans. You have a capital improvement plan, you put the money in place, when the money's needed, it's there. No loan. Taxpayers get the benefit of paying for that, and that's the end of that. It's a shame Battle Creek Public Schools and the government of Battle Creek do not even understand that concept. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comments? Reese.
Good evening, Reese Atkins, 84 South 23rd Street. I would just like to say I am very proud for the city of Battle Creek, the city of Battle Creek Police Department, Michigan State Police, and the County Sheriff's Department this last weekend, as we had a wonderful outcome for a soldier from Battle Creek who had passed away, who was on active duty. It was awesome seeing the community come together, the police departments, the fire departments, and everybody come together to honor this young man. Me and my wife had the opportunity to go out and put flags out along Dickman Road on Thursday, and then on Saturday, after everything was all said and done, we had the privilege of going out and removing these flags from the street sides that was put out. There was over 600 flags put out. The gentleman who did it came from very long distance. This is the first time he's ever been in Battle Creek. He was very happy with the outcome of Battle Creek, and I am very proud of the way Battle Creek came out to honor this young man who died serving our country. Thank you.
Thank you, Reese. Any other comments at this time? Any other comments? Senon, any commission comments? Commissioner Patrick O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mayor. I take the time to not talk about sludge skimmers. That's a new word I learned tonight. So anyways, the Post Foundation, one of the MPCs sent me something about the Post Foundation. They help raise money for materials for area students. They're going to be doing a spaghetti dinner at Bullista Blues on May 20, which is the same time as their next meeting. It's one of the take-home bake things. They're $16 a meal, but you have to order your tickets in advance, so they asked me to send it out there. So you could call a person named Randy at 269-275-5020. And then, same, a couple weeks ago, we talked about the new shop down here called Uproat Eatery Co-op. They're going to be hosting a movie that explains what Co-op is on May 23, Friday at 6 o'clock at 104 Calhoun Street. And Reese, thank you for bringing up the flags. At the VA for Memorial Weekend, they do flags out at the VA, the National Cemetery. Thank you. That would be May 24 at 8:00 a.m., if anybody's interested in helping them out put the flags in. So, and thank you, Battle Creek, for letting me serve you.
Thank you, Commissioner Patrick O'Donnell. Any other commission comments at this time? Commissioner LaCrosse.
Since I became a commissioner, I was given the opportunity to meet with all the department heads, and I've had a chance to learn a lot. Some of them are here today. I would encourage all commissioners, if you get the opportunity to do that, it's really amazing to get to know all that information from them. They have a lot of, a lot of knowledge. I've also had the opportunity to do the Citizens Police Academy, and the Community Oversight Board also was part of that, so I just wanted to mention that, so you guys knew about it. I know that they were very involved in that whole, whole process and learning a lot, so just wanted to let everyone know.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commission comments? Commissioner Smith.
I just wanted to piggyback off what Reese said. My family and I were involved also in getting together with the rest of the community, and I was just really proud of Battle Creek as a whole, the officers, the fire departments. Even one of the schools had a school bus come out, and I just think, like, the show of the community was really refreshing to see. So I just appreciate everybody that was a part of all that this weekend.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mayor?
Other comments?
If I could just interject real quickly, thank you, just in piggybacking on Commissioner LaCrosse's comments, that the Community Oversight Board has been very active behind the scenes. They had an extensive amount of training that they needed to go through. Citizens Police Academy was part of that. They have adopted their bylaws, and they are ready to perform their duties.
Great. Thank you very much. I would like to thank Chad for working overtime and answering all of our needs when it came to the new system. I think we did a great job, and Chad, thank you very much. Without any further ado, we'll adjourn our meeting. Please have a good evening.